Two o'clock, so we'll make a start. Welcome to our amenities committee meeting on Wednesday, the 4th of May. It is a little bit stuffy in here, some windows are open, so hopefully it makes it somewhat less stuffy. We'll start with declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests, 937. Does anyone have any interest that they need to declare, please? None, thank you very much. 938, do we have any apologies for absence, please, Karen?
I've not received any.
No, I would note apologies from the mayor, councillor Brindle, who's currently poorly, so if we could note those, please. Moving on to 939, the minutes, these are the minutes from the meeting held on the 6th of April. They've been received by full council. Are members happy that they're a true and accurate record? Yes?
Oh, isn't that...
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's the first three items. I am going to vary the order of the agenda today because we've got a couple of speakers. And I would hate for them to sit through the entirety of the meeting if they didn't have to, frankly. That's our job sadly. So we'll start with, if I can come up with a relevant item, Town Team and Countryside Officers' report. Starting with yourself, Nick, thank you very much for circulating your report.
Okay.
Anything else to go for?
Yeah, so we're just sort of basically going through. The last one has been quite a challenge for myself and the team. We've had a bit of absence with sickness and staff taking annual leave. So we've been getting on the way through the jobs list that we previously spoke about. So just quickly reviewing through, so in the street furniture, the team are continuing to work hard and get the street furniture washed and cleaned, including the bins and benches around the town, especially even up to the Jubilee celebrations. We've also been working with Breckland Council in the term of ownership of litter bins that are in desperate need of replacing, that are on Breckland land. So we've been sort of working with them quite closely. We've been looking at some other issues in the town as well, and the ownership of Breckland and Norfolk. Basically, a lot of the street furniture in the King Street is owned by them. So we've picked up on quite a bit of different issues around the town, including the lampposts, signage, graffiti, waste, and also some of the motorbike deterrent things around the ridges. Town centre floral displays, the contractors have been working busy in preparation for our Jubilee celebrations. So all our baskets and plants are now planted, and they should be going up around about the 16th of May. Special thanks goes to local company Roots and Roots for their condemnation for some flowers for the marketplace, and also for Simon Long for being the main sponsor for this year's Fettford in Bloom competition. Public toilets, further improvements are being shown in the cleaners of the public toilets. The contractor has shown really great sort of success with them. They've now recruited some extra staff, which has helped them tremendously. So everything's going well with that. The playparks, unfortunately, many attempts and correspondence have happened with the contract that we agreed to carry out the repair works that were needed on the playparks. Unfortunately, due to personal circumstances, they wasn't able to fulfil their agreement. We have now found another company, and also does the playpark repairs, and have registered. And they're going to be carrying out the repairs that are needed as soon as possible. So I hope within the next week to two weeks maximum, they'll be carrying out all the repairs that are needed around the areas of the town on the playparks. That's pretty much my report, Terry.
Thank you very much. Nick, any questions for Nick on Town Team stuff, please? Dave first?
Yeah, I was noticing that one of the pictures was the really filthy sign on a problem with the common with bylaws.
Yeah.
I think the bylaws are outdated, aren't they?
Yeah, I've been working with Breckland, and they're looking into it. Obviously, they were the ones that enforced the rules originally for the common areas. So they're doing a bit of depth information on their end to try and eradicate some of the rules that was obviously taken out, some of the rules that are still going. So they're working through that, and they've also, you know, said that they will try and look at us, we'll replace in the signage as well for us.
Okay.
Just as those areas are.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, there's several of those dotted around the town, and they all look the same, so that'd be good. Thank you, Dave. Stuart, please.
Well, just to thank Nick for the ongoing work that they're doing, because this is a sorely overdue task. And, you know, the street furniture, getting it all painted and something, but it's not an easy task to pull the bodies together. It's great that we've worked with various bodies.
We're trying to move forward with the town council, so if particularly we're in the town team, if we work together, Breckland, Norfolk, you know, we can try and make a difference, all working together.
The one grey area which we've had before is about the finger post and the legacy.
Yeah.
Last time, I'm always under the impression that we paid for it, or County Council may have paid for it, but they were going to pass the ownership to us and the legacy costs to us.
Yeah.
However, I think the last meeting we had, it was indicative that potentially they may be saying it's on their asset schedule to maintain and do. So two questions is, one is probably going to agree to pick up the cost of you doing the work on the finger posts.
Okay.
And B, on the finger posts themselves, we've got a number that are pointing in just different directions, so we're just getting pointed in the wrong way. Presumably, there's something we can do with the grub screws.
Yeah.
If it's done.
Some of the finger posts themselves, the team have had a look at, obviously they've tried to replace the grub screws that hold them into place. Unfortunately, a lot of them are unsuccessful. I have been just yesterday talking to an officer at Norfolk County Council. And they're obviously now looking into sort of the assets in King Street that they are under ownership of. So one of the ones is the finger posts. So I'm hoping probably next week, I'm going to have a meeting with them on site to go through everything that's in King Street, all the areas, all the finger posts, the lampposts, the street furniture, and see what is definitely under their jurisdiction and what they're responsible for. So we know going forward, we know exactly what we're dealing with and who owns what.
So then, if you have that, may I ask, just happy that we then get some kind of plan of action to the painting of them? Because the black lampposts are now sorely needed.
They are.
But also, the respect to the conservation area, where you've got around about the marketplace with three different heads on, just to get me some consistency and making it look a bit more quality. But yeah, it's not an overnight job, but if you've got contact with people who are willing to pay the debt, then it's, you can embrace that decision at these things.
I think that's the thing, is building bridges, working together, finding, you know, distinguishing who owns what within Fettford. You know, and we can go forward from that point on, knowing exactly where we're going, who we've got to go to for repairs, for the maintenance costs. Yeah, it makes sense, definitely.
Yeah. Thank you again.
Any other questions for Nick, please? No, just a couple from myself. Firstly, Nick, on the issue of Breckland and Norfolk.
Yeah.
And obviously, we sit here today as town councillors on amenities.
Yeah.
Many of us are also Breckland councillors and/or Norfolk County councillors. So what I'm saying is, please do let us know if you are having issues or challenges with either Norfolk or Breckland. Because it might be that actually one of us even knows the officer or knows the relevant department, and might be able to sort of, you know, assist with getting things done. Certainly from the county point of view, we have a local member highways budget. So it might be that we can allocate some of our funds for something if it fits the criteria. But in the sort of spirit of working together, you know, we want to help you as much as, you know, you're helping amenities. And then the last one was on playparks. Obviously, this is the priority, sort of health and safety type stuff, that we're still trying to finish off the list. And then we've got some more positive sort of improvement type work to follow. We said last month that we'd set up a working group to go through the list with you. And so if we could get that set up and have at least a meeting before the next amenities meeting. And if we let the whole committee know anyone that wants to come, that would be really appreciated. Because, you know, we have a lot of play areas, there's lots of different issues, and it is about time we started going through them and being more proactive, because they do need looking after. So that'd be really encouraging. But generally, no, I'm very happy, and particularly obviously about the sponsor for the Fettford in Bloom, which I know you personally was involved in. Which I'm very pleased about, I was getting slightly worried, we wouldn't get one, and more worrying, I might have to pay for it myself. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Brilliant. If there's no further questions, we'll move on to the second half of the report, which is the Countryside Officers' report, and over to Stephen.
Thank you, Nick, thank you, Terry. Countryside report, so unfortunately I had a bit of illness myself last month, combined with some annual leave, so some of the tasks we had to postpone and cancel, a bit of a shame. But we did get the butterfly transect up and running again. That's been in operation for the past 10 years, it's been carried out by a regular volunteer, organised by the Regional Butterfly Conservation Trust. So I've been liaised with them, they've passed all the transects over. So we're set up with our own volunteers, and that follows a set route around the common, comprising of eight transects. So butterflies seen on each transect are recorded and reported back to the trust. So this is a good indicator of habitat management and butterfly populations across the common, which can feedback into the management plans. So if there's any volunteers out there who would like to do some of that, then please let me know. Fredericks Wood was working in there to tidy up the entrance from the covelet, as well as removal of the variegated yellow archangel. So that's an invasive, non-native plant, net alight with the yellow flowers. We remove it as it can spread and carpet the woodland floor, excluding other plants. So we focused on the middle of the wood, isolating pockets of the plant on the outside. Barn and cross common, we did a fencing gate check complete on the western side of the common. We had to repair a few sections of stock fence, which had a few holes in there, I'm not sure why. I was able to get some stock net in with the volunteers, patch them up. So unfortunately, I was only able to complete 30 hours for last month. In terms of grazing, sheep are grazing the eastern side of the common presently. The grazers have committed to, in principle, to graze Castle Park for sheep. So liaison with the land agents to update the grazing licence to incorporate this before moving the animals onto the site. So prior to that, we'll have to do another fence line check, a gate check, and just make sure that the closing latches are in the right place. And we're still using the report-it system, which is available from the town council website. And then we've got the fish pass there, do you want to move on to that later?
Yeah, deal with that under a separate agenda item.
And that's it, my thoughts for this one.
Brilliant, thank you.
Dennis, please. On butterfly population?
Yes.
Are we going to have any report on what butterflies we have on the common, and how common they are, or, you know?
Yeah, hopefully.
Strong population in the new transect?
Runs from the 1st of April, goes to the end of September. And your idea is you try and do it on a weekly basis to build up a solid dataset, and then that is reported.
In September, we could have a report?
You do it up until the end of September.
Right, so October?
October, November.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure we can have a sneak peek midway through. I'm very impatient.
Feel free to join in the survey.
I don't know. So we'll have, you know, a rough overview. And also, it's a good opportunity to re-promote it if we have a sort of midway through look at it. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Dennis. Dave, please.
Give us an update on ramsy close play area, because I understand it's been locked.
Oh, the ramsy close open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, not the play area as such.
Well, it was originally designated as one, but I think what's stated now is up for debate, I think, but yeah, that's one.
Yeah, it's open again, I've spoken to.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
All right. That's in the last few days, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the fence around the...
That's still in situ. It's secured now, because I believe it was tampered with and made unsafe.
That's good, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Stuart?
Thanks, Steve. Just in terms of the grazing, we're talking about sheep. I thought at one point we were saying we were going to get the goats on there because they have more than gnarly stuff, and then the sheep were coming. Presumably, this is the opportunity that the grazers are popping sheep away and coming on.
Yeah, and there's very many logistical reasons not to have goats.
Right.
Primarily, you can't get them, and if you do get them, you can't keep them in. The fence that is actually put in, the stock fence, in primarily for cattle and sheep. If you're going to put in livestock fencing for goats, you'd probably look at something a little bit different. So I don't know where that suggestion comes from.
So on the suggestion on the fencing issue, are we happy that the gate bolts and everything that we've got, and obviously you're going to do another check?
Yeah.
But could that not be done before, are you comfortable that everything's placed? I get somebody bending me every week, well, then bolts in it right on that gate there, or that's not going to work. So I just want to make sure, you know, we're saying it's going to happen.
Just for time commitment, so we haven't been able to do that. Oh, no, we do it prior, definitely.
Thank you, Stuart. Dennis?
On the sheep we're having on there, are there native breed sheep? Because sometimes on the common, we have some native breed sheep.
Yeah, hopefully, requested, and more relatives.
More robust.
That's it.
And they can eat down some of the stuff that goats would usually get.
Some of them do look like goats.
Yeah, some of them do look like goats.
So it may be okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm watching.
Any further questions for Stephen? Susie?
Sorry, I'll get back to the butterflies, but I'm getting quick enough with the question. I just wondered, do you know how many breeds of butterfly that we have?
How many species of butterfly? On the common itself, haven't had a proper look, but we're between 14, 50 butterfly species across Britain.
Right, it's a quite a good group. I just wondered, in the past few years, have they increased or decreased?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, so it's good to actually do the survey, because it sort of informs our management. So are we grazing too much, too little? Are we removing the right areas of gorse, right areas of scrub? So doing that sort of survey is a good indication of your habitat management. So as we progress through the certainly season, we should be able to further assess how we're doing really.
Any further questions, please?
You may, could, sorry. No, I'm doing a lot of talking today, but. When I had the pleasure of being mayor, I went to a presentation at the British Ethological Society on moths and moth traps and stuff. Would it be possible sometime maybe to survey what moths we got on there? Because moths play a very important part.
Yeah. Species of moth, they go into large numbers.
Yes.
Yeah. So if you've still got contact with BTO, that'd be quite handy to pass over.
I'll give you my ring and check it out.
Yeah.
They, they, the moth catch is really interesting because the amount of...
Because you tend to do those overnight, so then you come and survey them in the morning.
In this area, they're very rare. That's it, it would be nice to know if we have them on the common.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, leave that with me then.
Okay, just on grazing, I appreciate its progress. Do we have a sort of estimated data when the sheep will be present on Castle Park?
It's always hard with livestock, when grazing is just coming out of the lambing season, so obviously they've been very busy.
Yeah.
As well as hosting all the other animals, the cattle. But hopefully before the end of May.
Okay, so that relatively soon then?
Yeah, relatively soon.
Brilliant. And I sound like a broken record, but we've spoke a few times now about the need to do some sort of public briefing paper on why we undertake the grazing, not just because we like sheep, but there are conservation reasons. So if we could be sure to make sure that that goes out in advance of the shit going on.
Yeah, because it'd be the perfect timing, really.
Yeah, if I have another person say to me, it's because we don't want to pay someone to cut the grass. I feel I would like to be able to signpost them for our briefing paper on why we do it. So if we can make sure that happens, I would be very appreciative. Okay, if there's no further questions for either Nick or Stephen, we will move on. There are two other agenda items which I'm going to take now, because they are related to Nick's report, and then he'll be free to go. And so the first one is the update on the adoption of flower beds. Did you want to just touch on that one quickly?
Yeah, so we've contacted both Norfolk County Council and Breckland District Council, that own several of the areas. We've obviously passed on the costings of what we were looking at to obviously revamp those areas. We've also asked them for whether they would agree for their licences to be issued, but we're still waiting responses from both of them.
Okay. Anything further on that one from anyone else? I'm just going to share my frustration here, and it's not a frustration directed at you, Nick, but we first talking, started talking about the need to upgrade flower beds last October. And here we are in May, and we're no further forwards. We're either identifying money or appointing a contractor to look after these flower beds. So we've largely missed the boat for this year, which I think is a big shame, to be honest with you. In a Jubilee year, when we wanted to upgrade them, we're no further forward now than we were in October. So that's a frustration. Secondly, I have spoke to Breckland this morning, because they had allocated £2,000 of MTI money to upgrade their flower beds that they were responsible for. And my hope was that they would give it to us as a town council, and we would add it on to our existing contract. But because we haven't been able to make any progress, I suggested to Breckland that they do it themselves, frankly, and they spend the money and they appoint a contractor. Because all of these flower beds are Breckland owned, and I've given indication as to what we discussed as a committee about the locations. The one by Argos, for me, is top of the list because it's so central and it's along the river, and there's lots of work going down there to regenerate. So sadly, I think for this growing season, that deals with that agenda item on flower beds, because we haven't been able to progress it. I hope Breckland can move relatively quickly and deal with it in time for this year and in time for the Jubilee, which was our original plan. And then we can, in time as a committee, talk about a longer term arrangement, which is really what we wanted to get to. So we have a sort of, you know, a decent floral display across the town, whether it's town council, hanging baskets or tubs, or Breckland or Norfolk, or whoever. So that's me being frustrated.
Stuart? Just come back on that, yes, the drop yard Breckland beds, we've identified quite a lot of the areas that were Norfolk County Council ones, which were, you know, owned by Tom Spain, and then the bus station there. I presume Breckland won't take a look at those as part of the...
I think they manage them on behalf of Norfolk County Council, so they basically do the grass cutting of the verges and the areas to the areas of the...
That's all they do.
Yeah, in the sense of actually maintaining them, I think they would obviously have to come to some agreement to win themselves to...
I'm just wondering if this is going with the volunteers to have a little bit of a tidy up there, or I would throw anything at it, but just those couple of areas, because they are high profile and drive by. If we can just get them trimmed down and just a couple of shrubs or something put in there, and then look at it long term. But whether I can just have a wander down there and have a look at it, or something, the possibility of that.
Maybe I'll take the officer when he comes from Norfolk and just sort of breaking past that area and discussing parts and see what they come up with.
So there's two bits, one is the bit Tom Spain went down and did recall, that area, just to decrease the money, a bit, protect a little bit of the maintenance process. And then there's a bit unadopted by the bus station, that was how it seems.
Yeah, a large, yeah.
There's a little triangle there, nobody wants to take ownership of that, which is going to be tidied up.
And it might be worth mentioning, Nick, when you meet with the chap from Norfolk, what are the arrangements are for removing litter from the flower bed next to the bus shelters?
Yeah.
It's full of litter bushes and that sort of thing, which are fine, but it's always full of rubbish. People are literally stood waiting for a bus, and that's all you can see, and that's not what we want, frankly. Sorry, Carla, you did put your hand up before Stuart, and I probably forgot.
Thank you, I was going to say, is that when it comes to flower beds, you know, soil or nature per se, doesn't really wait for the times of the council decisions. He needs to be a bit more prompt when it comes to take those decisions in advance, so that in those things, on the side of time to blow, particularly in Jubilee year, like Shannon mentioned. So I suppose the next time, we need to rush through the process a bit faster, or start earlier on appointing a team to do it. Because we run the risk of going over the season and then not being able to do what the things will just look a bit sad to the eye, basically.
Absolutely, so a note for us on our sort of action plan is we'll, you know, get ready for next year, even sooner than October.
Yeah.
Any other questions on flower beds, floral displays? Okay, so moving on to the second part for you, Nick, which is more positive, is the update on the front garden competition.
Yeah, so we went out to local businesses that are in the town, and see if we can forward in sponsoring the event. And we was sort of fortunate with the local company, Simon Long, came forward and put all the money together for the whole lot, for the prizes. So that's all coming together quite well. So obviously, we're in good stead for the event itself.
Brilliant, and please do pass on my thanks to Simon Long. I have had a few members of the public and at least one councillor say to me, how do we nominate? Is there a nomination form? Because originally, we said it would be live from the 1st of May, and I appreciate it's only 4th of May today. But Chris and I were walking around a particular area yesterday, and there's a couple of people we want to nominate as councillors. So is there a nomination form, or how do we nominate?
Yeah, as far as where we do have form in the office, I will check up on that when I go back straight away.
Brilliant, so if we can circulate that certainly to the committee, get something online, but essentially, we're open for nominations, which I think is really encouraging. Judging, I think, was July, so we'll revisit that at the June meeting as well. Any questions, anyone from the committee on front garden competition? No? Happy? Good. Thank you very much, Nick.
All right, thank you for your time, thank you.
Tick those off, so I don't go back. Talk about it again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, just to keep Karen on her toes with a minute, so I'm going to take the update on the fish pass next. How I would like to play this one, we don't ordinarily have a public forum at amenities, but we do have the power to suspend the meeting and allow members of the public to speak, which I intend to do. So I would like for the officer to present the update, which is included within our packs, which is update on the fish pass, to see where we're at. And then invite members of the public, if you wish to ask questions or make a statement to indicate, and I'll invite you to come forward. You're welcome to either stand, or there is a chair at the end there, if you'd like to come forward and sit at the table. There are a few members of the public here, so please keep your contributions as brief as you possibly can. I know there's a lot to be said on this issue, and, you know, my point is, there's a number of committee members, and I do want to get to a point where we discuss this as a committee and we agree a recommendation to move it forward. So we'll hear from the officer, hear from the members of the public, and then discuss it as a committee. And just on a procedural point, obviously, all of our meetings are video recorded and audio recorded. At the point that we suspend the meeting to hear from the members of the public, we also suspend the audio and video recording because we're suspending the meeting. So just to be clear on that part of the process. That being said, Stephen, over to you with your update, please.
Lovely, thank you. So we've been chasing the flood risk assessment report with the embor, now you can see. I think the gentleman has come back today, so he's chasing it with his own department. So it's in, it's in progress to extend the temporary frac. So that's a temporary licence we have for the construction there. So once we attain further knowledge of this, then we can put in place the next course of action.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. So before I do suspend the meeting and turn off the recording, just to make absolute sure, if you could raise your hand as a member of the public, if you did want to speak at this point? No? Okay, just before I invite you to speak, I just need to get the folks to do the necessary to turn off. Okay, are there any comments or questions from councillors, please, on the fish pass issue? Stuart?
I'd share the frustration and the position that we are in. We discussed this at full council, and we've had an update today. My understanding is our short term repair licence has expired, which means technically, we're not going to do anything until we've got the licence placed. But I would think morally, and, you know, if the EA are taking a long while to respond to us, we should grasp the net and say, we will maintain the short term repair as it is, because it was agreed that that amount of flow seemed to be acceptable to maintain that temporary repair until such time, we have a way forward. I think if we're going to wait for EA even a while to give us licences, we're going to always be chasing itself and be months behind after further flow has happened, you know. So I think we all bought into the idea that the amount of flow that was going to be there was the right amount. We accepted the benefits of the fish pass, allowing fish passage, but also we did accept that we didn't want a raging torrent going through there all the while. So I think is that in the short term, if we can just agree as a council to say, we will maintain the short term repair. I would then hope that we can gather an EA person, I gather from last week's meeting, that Ellis was not going to be the officer required to give the way forward. But there will be a person who's, even if it's an area person, who will have the jurisdiction of this. So I think we need to get them down here and say, what is the plan forward? Because there were noises that a further funding of a fish pass of some kind may come through in next year's EA budget, but then it may not. You know, and I think we need to have this course of action laid out. If that doesn't happen, what are we going to do? Because we have an asset down there, we have a little bridge, and if we do nothing, that's going to be washed away in due course, and then we're going to have further expenditure. So I think we as a group need to look after our own assets. I think it was agreed that we will continue to have a flow through there of some kind and an amount that could be controlled. But I do think we do need to rebuild that bank back a bit, so that we can protect our own asset, and that Norfolk Bridge.
Okay, thanks, Stuart. Anyone else want to contribute at this point? Nope. Um. Well, I have got a proposal which uh I'd like to put to the committee and um Karen, I do have a typed version, so you don't need to be physically scribbling this down. I'll give it to you at the end. Um. And uh apologies, it's a bit long, but this is an important issue and I'll take you through the four points of the proposal. So the first point is uh, we as a committee request that Fettford Town Council staff undertake a visual audit of the breach and the area surrounding it at least once a fortnight, recording a photographic log as evidence. The visual audit will aim to monitor the area, check for any damages to the temporary repair and ensure that the public information statement remains visible to members of the public. A summary of the results of the visual audit will be included in the countryside officers' report for the monthly meeting of the amenities committee. So that first point is about us as a council monitoring and doing what we can to safeguard that area, which is ultimately our land. Whether that's damage to the actual temporary structure, uh by bits being taken away or bits being added to it. We as a council want to be monitoring it and we as a committee want to be assured that that monitoring is taking place. So that's the first point. The second one, as you probably gathered there, refers to a statement. So um the second point is that we adopt and agree to issue the following statement in relation to the temporary repair at the breach. And as one of the ways that we will share that, it will be online, but also in a laminated paper form uh on site. And the statement says, uh, and forgive me, it's not a polished article, but it's uh what we have so far. Please do not sit on, walk on or otherwise damage or touch this temporary structure either deliberately or inadvertently. This is an important feature protecting the river and the local environment and that must not be modified unless under the supervision of Fettford Town Council staff or appointed contractors who obtain the necessary permissions from the Environment Agency. Any attempt to damage the structure or to block the flow of water through it will be regarded as criminal damage and reported to the relevant authorities. If you witness any such damage being undertaken, please report to, and it gives the necessary contact details for the police, the Environment Agency and Fettford Town Council. And as I say, I would like to see that displayed at the site. Um. So we make clear that actually it is an important structure, it's there for a reason and people, for whatever reason, uh are not to tamper with it um and, you know, amend it. The third point is that I would like for us to adopt and agree to send the following letter to the Environment Agency, which I would propose to send as Chair of the Amenities Committee with your support. Uh. And I've written it as Dear Ellis, but I would also copy in somebody more senior at the Environment Agency, possibly the Chief Exec or relevant Eastern Region person. And it says, the amenities committee of Fettford Town Council met on Wednesday the fourth of May and discussed the breach on the River Fett and the latest developments in relation to proposals for a fish pass. The committee resolved that I write to you to make clear how disappointed they are that plans to address the breach are still progressing and thus far we have collectively been unable to confirm a more permanent solution. We do not feel that we have received clear advice from the Environment Agency and have not been enabled to resolve this issue in the interest of the community that we serve or protect the environment that we are custodians of. We would like to invite you to attend and present at a future meeting of our amenities committee, either on Wednesday the first of June or Wednesday the sixth of July. Both meetings commence at two P M. We are keen to better understand what options are available to Fettford Town Council to either repair the breach on a like for like basis with with what was there before or to upgrade the area to encompass a new fish pass option. We are also keen to better understand the options that may be available with funding from the Environment Agency on either option. Clarity on the necessary uh permits and licences would be most welcome. We wish to make it clear that the current temporary structure should be in situ for as shorter time as possible and that our desire is for a longer term permanent fix to be in place without further delay. Uh. So that's the third point of my proposal. And the final point, you'll be pleased to know, is that we request from town council officers a detailed written position statement for the June meeting of the amenities committee to include a timeline of events and an options analysis, including costings.
Um. I I think your proposal is a very good one. I'd be willing to second it, but um. Is there going to be an opportunity at the June meeting or whatever meeting it is for the public to have a question of the officer who comes in to?
Uh. As in if we get somebody from the Environment.
Yes. To speak to them also.
I can't dictate and we can't dictate as a committee that they have to answer questions from the public, but we can certainly ask them.
Yes.
So we can't require them to do that. But if they are willing to take questions, then I'm happy to facilitate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, please, from the committee? Carla?
Oh, and as I said, could we then propose to environmentations that we collect? Are we still questions from the public or the different groups involved? We submit them in advance, so that they can find them throughout the answer in time for the meeting. I think that'd be more appropriate, gives the public a chance to put the questions forward. We still hopefully get some sort of answer from them.
Absolutely, that's a really good suggestion.
Could 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 we not do it on site?
On site?
Yeah.
Which one do to me?
Explode.
Um.
Okay, you know.
Just possibly, yes. I mean, uh I don't fancy chairing a meeting on site. But if they are here, then it would make sense to visit. Um. We would have to give, think about that because we're a big committee, frankly. Um. But if there is somebody coming to from the Environment Agency to Fettford, it would make sense to take them to the location. Uh. Bearing in mind, the person who is least, most knowledgeable, Ellis, possibly won't be the person we're dealing with moving forward, so kill two birds with one stone, not literally, um but we'll, you know, get them involved and educate. Any other questions or comments? No? From a.
Carla.
Carla, sorry.
Sorry, Benjy. Um. It seems to be we're gathering all the information from different parties that the person responsible, Ellis. It's sort of washing his hands a little bit out of the situation at the moment for lack of a better term. I think we ought to put a lot of pressure as a as a council and as a collective group, although I'm doing a bit of this all the time, not people involved with a whole lot of pressure on the EA um to get the gases going. Because honestly, it's causing this, a lot of the different groups involved related to the river and some sort of capacity. It's given us a lot of time to dispense on the meetings because we don't seem to get a final decision. Things keep going in a circle, been going on for a long time, so we just waste the time, we're stressing build up for the parts involved. I think we ought to be a bit, put a little bit more lobbying, a little more pressure on the EA and say, look, this is a majoration town, we need to get it sorted. Give us a meeting and give us a final decision, because if we have to follow your guidance, we must have that guidance to be able to follow it. That's that's my point of view.
No, I completely agree and I I see this as our sort of first formal step towards doing that.
We need a solution and as soon as the better.
Absolutely. Okay, um from an officer's point of view, obviously there's a few things in there for you guys to implement. Are you relatively happy with what's being proposed?
I think from our side, we have to, I mean, we we are guided by the Environment Agency and so, you know, if if the Environment Agency comes and tells us certain things, we will, our advice to council will be to follow that particular advice. Council can always override that, council can come up with something different. So what what the approach that we've taken is just to ensure that we get the right documentation, we get the right permissions and get the right licences from the Environment Agency and we then make decisions based on that. And I think what my understanding, I mean, I was listening very intently to what you were writing, not the insights of it, is that you're just trying to speed up that particular process so that we can actually get to that point a little bit faster than we have in the past.
Absolutely, it's fine. Okay, Stuart.
But just, yeah, Alan's got words very gutted and what I would like to say, if this licence isn't forthcoming, that we still maintain the temporary structure. And that needs to be a a committed discussion because they are going, they're technically not having a licence to do that. But I think we should still do that to maintain it.
Yeah. I'm I'm not gonna suspend the meeting again, so I'm afraid you won't be able to speak again, but thank you. Okay, um we've had a proposer and a second up. Uh. I will give Karen the uh wording after the meeting, but is everybody clear on what you're voting on? It's as as read. And could I show to show in support or against? So support first, please. Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Don't just take anybody against. Okay, um you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, uh but feel free to leave if you want. There's nothing more exciting than fish pass on the agenda, I can assure you. Yep.
Because I I agree with him to some extent, uh that that should be a course of action and I didn't really want it. I mean, so angry out there for twice, and there's many comments about it. Um. But but I agree with him that we should do that, but I think we we're sending this letter off and we're giving them a I see this as a bit of a final chance. And if they don't respond and and something doesn't, isn't forthcoming, then I think we do need to take it into our own hands, licence or not. And um.
I agree.
And if they need to take us to court, then maybe they will do that, but um.
I I like rebellious Dave normally, um but at this point, we're going to send the letter.
I agree with that.
And then we'll reassess uh from there on in.
I think we just need to be a whole lot more assertive with them to make them understand the urgency of the matter for everybody, certainly.
Okay, Stuart.
I just want, we've put in the letter that in the meantime, we will be maintaining the the temporary lunch until such a kind of occasion comes to pass. Um. I know you voted on the.
Yeah, well, you know what I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say that we had a proposer and a second that we've taken the vote.
Make a small comment, Stuart, is that you offer them an alternative, they will have time to decide. That's how it's always works.
Yeah.
You you can say that in the meanwhile, we are maintaining it, however, this is not a long term situation, it must be addressed ASAP. Because if you give them an alternative, they'll take their time. That's my point.
No, that's fine. Uh. I don't dismiss what you're suggesting, Stuart, but at this point, we'll stick to what we've agreed. Um. And we will reassess and we may need to separately write to them and say, hey, look, we don't have our uh licence renewed, but this is what we're doing and we're letting you know.
Remember to bring that back our next meeting if it's relevant, I'm sure. Stuart won't let us forget.
Yeah.
Of course.
Thank you. Right, I'm gonna move on now before anyone puts around them. Um, uh I'm gonna go back to the correct order and take the ones that we've not dealt with, which is nine four zero action points and updates. Now, were there any uh action points or updates in the list that was circulated that anybody wanted to raise or ask any questions of on this point? Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. No. Um. I think, Stephen, there was one of the updates that uh has progressed a little, wasn't there? We were gonna take under this one and I'm trying to uh did a grass seed, uh grass seed on Mill Lane. Did you want to comment on that at this point?
Yeah, I think um this this has been going a while. So we wanted to reseed the areas on Mill Lane, I believe. Um. I think it's slightly confusing on the exact areas. There's a bit of grass at the riverside, isn't there, I believe? And then you go further along, unfortunately, unfortunately, a lot of people are starting to park. There's a lot of hard cores under there. I don't know if that's ever been grassed, has it or?
Yeah.
It has. Okay, um so there is potential to reseed it.
Yeah.
So the reseeding is not an issue. I think we wanted to put some signs up suggesting, please use a designated car parking space um to save this as green space to promote the the environmental side of the town.
Yeah.
Um. To do so, we'd need um a licence from the uh Environment A N C to do so.
Yeah. So.
So that goes for a separate process.
Oh, you've said naughty word.
Um, we are, we're moving along with that, so we can get a post in. That comes at a slight cost. But that is something we could look at.
Okay.
And ideally, reseeding probably wants to be done the good side of Christmas, so the Octobers, September time. Can be done this sort of time of year, but then you're relying on the weather, a lot of water and we're quite under the cost of labour, as you you're probably well aware.
Okay, so as I understand it, we don't need a licence to reseed the area, but we do need a licence to put signs up. So my view would be that it's it's quite a mess on that side of the river along Green Lane. I, and it's entirely up to security, but my view is that we would want to reseed that as soon as we practically can. Bearing in mind store labour shortages and Jubilee and all the rest of it. Um. But there's a particular section that needs some levelling because there's quite a lot of dips and it needs to be reseeded. And then separately apply for the necessary permit or licence to put the signs up. But I don't want us to be waiting for the signs and the permit. Uh. I want us to be getting on with the seeding because, you know, that area is deteriorating. Um. So that would be my view. Dennis.
Yeah, as the officer said, um the best time to reseed is is when we're going into autumn, like game really. Um. Reseeding in the summer, you lose a lot to the birds to start with. And second of all, if you don't get enough rain, it won't grow. So I'm just, I'm I'm, don't miss, I mean, you're just, well, I am just greeting you perfectly, I think, but that that is the situation, really.
Just, we want to reseed it, don't we?
Yeah.
But we just want it done at the the most opportune time for it to be successful.
Yeah, we missed, we missed our opportunity again.
I didn't have a problem with seeding in May or June. You know, if if some of it takes, then it's better than none of it at the current state. As as we've ever, it should have been done before now. Uh. Anyone got any other views on that, please? Stuart?
Yeah, I share the frustration again that the, this is what we've talked about, the plans for this area and what we're trying to do. A little bit by the bridge, I would say get on and undo. I think you're gonna struggle as large of it where the ups and downs are. Um. If it's kept in use as as a car park, because whatever you put down in their soil and they won't won't take, the seeds will be dislodged. Uh. And so I think, you know, we're struggling. I think, yeah, we've all pragmatically thought that we did need to make that sacrificial area in the same way that the nunt bridges can't park, is it have the the lattice work in the field, which would allow, you know, the grass, the grass to come through. If it did grow, but I suspect it wouldn't because it would quite use the nunt bridges with the gravel on. Um. But it would make it more presentable and I think that would be the way forward. Um. To get some costing done for that and and get that as our way forward and get the EA to agree to that.
Yeah, we've had a longer term aim of uh discussing what goes on there. There's two schools of thought. One is to, you know, not allow any parking on that side of the road at all. And that's why we were putting hedging along there. And then there were others that were of the view that a formalised car parking space is better. Um. And I I tend to agree with the latter. Um. But that's an entirely different issue. At at this point, I think we should be maintaining the land that we're responsible for and part of that is reseeding. Okay. Happy?
Is there a question? Is there a question?
Oh, is there gonna be a proposal on that? I don't know.
Uh. Well, my proposal would be that we uh undertake the reseeding as soon as we're practically able.
Second, no?
I'm afraid I can't take questions from the public because we're no, I can't take those either, I'm afraid. You you're probably, it is the council rules, I'm afraid, but um uh that's the way we are. Uh. But, you know, do feel free to email us in after the meeting. Is anyone want to second that or are you all happy to wait till the autumn?
I think you're exactly right.
Well, my proposal would be that we undertake the reseeding as soon as we're able to. Yeah. I can't force them to do it like tomorrow.
Stuart, I'm happy to support that, just to try and tidy it up a bit, but I I don't think it's gonna happen long term, so.
Okay, we've got a proposer and a second up. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. Those against? Two. Carried.
Who was the proposer?
Mine was the proposer and Stuart was the second up. Um. Any other comments on action points and updates? None? Thank you very much. Moving on to nine four one, amenities committee admin to review the communities committee structure, terms of reference and calendar of meetings which was circulated. Uh. So Alan has kindly worked out the list of meetings for the rest of the year. Um. And you will note that we have uh some new members joining the committee following mayor making on Friday. Uh. So um uh that will take effect from the June meeting. And you have the terms of reference which were attached to the pack. Uh, okay. Does anyone have any proposed changes to our terms of reference? None? Dave?
Um. I just wanted to come in on the dates, um because we seem to have missed off the May date we did last year. So this this meeting doesn't really exist because it wasn't on the calendar and we put it afterwards. And I think it's because of the way the mayor making happens.
Yeah.
Um, uh, you know, it'd be quite good if it was programmed in for the beginning of May.
Is that generally the view of the committee that we add in a first Wednesday of May? You could always, yeah, absolutely. Uh. Any other? Uh any other comments, Alan, that you wish to make?
Well, the the terms of reference were approved in October twenty one, so the committee has looked at it relatively recently.
Yeah.
The meetings are just from the the mayoral pack that will be tabled on on Friday.
Yeah.
Proposed membership, so whether the committee still wants to meet monthly, but obviously, I think we did ask that question at the last meeting. Um yeah. As officers, you know, if you would meet every six months, that would be nice, but. We understand that, but this is basically.
Okay, thank you. Um and the only other point I particularly bring your attention to is the quorum. Uh I think historically, our quorum's been set at free. Um the default is free, but our members content that we stay at free. Yeah. Brilliant, okay, uh so um the decision required is to approve the committee structure, terms of reference and calendar of meetings for the forthcoming mayoral year. Uh could I have a proposal for that, please? And take Dennis and a second, Carla, all those in favour? Thank you very much, that deals with that one. Moving on to nine four three, financial report update, uh to receive and consider the amenities financial report for the twelve months ended the thirty first of March. And to determine if there are any environments that the committee proposes, Alan.
I think uh I I did switch, but uh if you will, I found out that I left off a cost loss, like so hence the revised version you got this morning. Uh we've ended up with a nine hundred and eighty eight pounds surplus overall, but it's a two two budget. Bearing in mind that we had a ten thousand pounds under budget on income, which was, we'd be expected more with six or what, uh uh six or seven, six one oh seven money, which didn't come in. So income wise, we've done okay, expenditure wise, there has been a lot, there's a lot of variances within within the budget. For example, we've gone over Christmas lights, but that wasn't, that was authorised by the town council. Uh if we still had a deficit, we would have taken money out of reserves to 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 fund that. We've managed to fund that from savings, which is also part of that resolution. Uh clay parks, we have taken money out of reserves, we had all that emergency expenditure, we have taken five thousand four hundred and two pounds out of reserves to finance that. And our trees, we had two thousand, uh about two thousand three hundred and sixty five reserved last year. We've walked that back because we knew that we were going to have those costs. And the other big change from previous reports that I've done is property maintenance, I'd always worried that we would actually put other committee property maintenance in here. Uh I went, I've done a detailed analysis and transferred out that those costs that don't belong to um to to amenities. Tourist expenses disappointing are still slightly higher than budget, uh I thought we'd done well, but then I realised the reason was because we've missed left off an invoice. Um and that's really it, you know, so overall, I think it's considering the year and the statutory maintenance and and the backlog that we had in so many of our. Our um kind of activities, I think the the result has been okay, you know, and we haven't had to uh fund from other reserves.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments on finances, please? No, um uh so we uh underspent Alan by a relatively small amount, just under a thousand pounds, which is um. Pretty encouraging, given everything that's been going on this year, we've done quite a lot of work as a committee. Um and I did email you about the idea of uh us uh essentially taking the underspend and putting it into a specific reserve for next year. And quite rightly, you've said, well, if other committees have overspent, we might need that thousand pounds to to balance the whole council's budget. Um what likelihood is it that other committees have overspent and will essentially need our thousand pounds to move things out?
Well, I mean, it's it's really, I'm I'm working through committee by by uh committee. But what my other fear is that there might be some costs, for example, you know, a cost came through quite recently from July last year, which was some some equipment that the previous countryside officer had purchased. You're always scared of that and I have, you know, normally you'd set aside a little bit of money to say, okay, if that does come true, because we're gonna spend the extra budget uh this year uh uh before we've been started. So my advice to you, and I I I try to grovel a little bit, is is if we can, if we can keep that as a little bit of contingency. Uh I I think it would be safe because I don't want to spend the extra budget, you know, in too much time, something does come through, at least we've got a little bit of safeguard for that.
No, thank you, uh I'll come back to that, Dennis.
Um yeah, just on on that point, if we can't keep the thousand pounds by putting it into zero things. That means it goes to the general fund, the council's general pot.
Well, what it does, but I think we've also, you know, when when we did the last revised budgets, at the finance committee, which resolved that we'd have to fund the RBL flooring repairs, which had not been budgeted. So those costs, you know, haven't come out too bad, but you know, we've still got to see what the the overall results was. You know, salary increases came very late, for example, so there were backdates and so that 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 came and had an impact. I think it's so difficult to do it, the unfortunate part about amenities is you are the first meeting of uh of the cycle, you know, at the end of the cycle, we we can, we have a lot more assurance. I think just to say that there's nine hundred and eighty eight pounds, you know, I don't think it's gonna make that much of much of a difference. I know, for example, that that I haven't processed the stock entries, so there's been one or two movements of stock outside, so I have to expense that. You know, I don't think it's very much, it could be a couple of hundred pounds, but I've had this committee, you know, to end up with a deficit because we've reserved the nine hundred pounds. And then in two weeks' time, we find some costs and all I'm asking is if we can just keep that as a little bit of contingency, you know, it it does go back into the general pot. But we can, we we've always, you know, one of the things we've we've decided to do is always have revised budgets. And if there is something that comes up, we at least we then have the flexibility next year, if we don't spend it to actually uh revise budgets going forward then.
Okay, so, oh, so my my question to Alan was, um the one area of expenditure for this current financial year which worries me is is street furniture. Because we overspent last year and we know there's a backlog of street furniture repairs and we're working on our audit of street furniture. And if I had more money, personally, I would choose to allocate it to street furniture. And I I appreciate it's it's less than a thousand pounds, but that said, you know, that's two little bins or, you know, a couple of inches. Um could we, uh Alan, um resolve to um request that if the money allows and there remains an underspend. That that is transferred to a reserve, but only if you are content with that at a later stage. So we could make a sort of, you know, our our view know now that if there's an underspend at a later stage, once all of the final accounts are produced, that we allocate that to a street furniture reserve.
Could I ask that I then table that at finance committee because um rather this committee make their decision, it's so so difficult to do that. At finance committee, we'd have an overall perspective and then we could just recommend, because one of our responsibilities as finance committee is to recommend to the other committees that we. That, you know, we we encourage you to reserve any unspent budget and we could actually do that at particular meeting.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I don't want to cause uh any difficulties because obviously we've got to play our part. But we have seen significant reductions in amenities over the last few years and we've got, you know, huge responsibilities, play areas, Christmas lights, all been overspending. And I um, you know, you would expect me as a chair and us as a committee, if there's an underspend, we would rather like to hold on to it, that said, we appreciate your position.
Like you said, one box from that, I think, you know, Christmas lights, for example, hopefully, you know, for the next few years, that will be fine because people that are working with them have certified them all. So so, you know, we should have savings in in certain areas. And I don't think I couldn't, you know, our increases in our open space management costs and floral design costs are actually relatively low. So I think we have got the ability, we're not going to see cost increases to the extent that we have this year.
Can I write that down?
I said, I think.
Alan, yes.
Yes, I'd say that I I agree with Alan a lot of points, I think those are thousands of pounds, it's not a huge amount, but it is enough to give us the overhead. I think rather than a reserve, it's more over over overhead, it's rather than a little bit of fluidity, should some 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 plan change or some some cost increase on on the current things that are budgeted for. That can, you know, the cost can increase over over the course of six months or whatever, and we need a little bit of a margin of error to cover for those things. Um when it comes to unexpected um extra expenditure, we we go back to the reserves of the main council and then go through the financial committee. Committee, I I think when it comes to to those, you know, extra expenses that are not, we're not prepared or sort of emergency situations. I think that's the reserve, the reserve of the the main council, the full council are in there for that. I think those a thousand pounds will come, will go a long way to really give us the security that we have the cash flow to manage. From one term to the other, within this committee, just to be uh financially uh secure. They have a confidence on 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 the expenses and have a little bit of a margin of error.
Do you, are you content to just take that to finance or do we need to propose in second?
I'm happy to take it to finance.
Lovely.
Would you for the committees?
Lovely, so what we're essentially saying is if when we get to the final, final accounts for the whole council, there's still an underspend for amenities, we want it back. Thank you very much, uh no further questions on finance, uh we've dealt with the next two, so we will move down to nine four six. Which is the update on the BFER uh River Trail. Um it says to update the committee on the BFER River Trail and on how the council can supplement the projects already undertaken by the BFER. Uh Brexton Edge Rivers, for those of you not familiar. And the decision required is to discuss and agree possible projects that the council can undertake and to confirm the placement and content of information boards on the trail. And it says Leeds chairman and town clerk, and the clerk's not here, and I don't know much more than what's in that paragraph. Stuart?
Um those who are involved with the Sculpture Trail, hasn't got anywhere yet, um are aware, we've done quite a bit of work in terms of trails and the Sculpture Trail design. So I think if I just set the scene, we we did that work under misapprehension that there was some money for the Sculpture Trail to be delivered. Uh when it transpired, there wasn't. Then we were told there's ten thousand for Sculpture Trail in the accounts, but when we looked into this, this turned out to be for the contribution to the BFER. Trails and contribution to delivering that, uh we are a. A partner of the BFER Landscape Partnership, um so we're obliged to put our um contribution there. And to deliver this as one of their outputs, we we have to um do that. So looking at the routes, you'll see that they are very similar, uh or they overlap to some extent what we agreed for the Sculpture Trail. So it seems that we've got this, we need to deliver these outputs, we as part of our partnering, we can expend the money um in this area. Which would complement our longer term aim of the Sculpture Trail. Um so I would suggest that we, you know, carry on working with Nick Dixon from BFER to to deliver these. I have volunteered to do an audit of the existing interpretation panels along these routes. But also to then suggest um whether there are gaps and both in terms of physical distance, but also in terms of information. So, you know, little things such as when you come down Old Berry Road, the driftway there to um the courthouse. There's still grooves in the brickwork there where the barges were pulled out of the river. And little people, people just don't know about that that being there, and it would be nice to highlight some of those little aspects of our river heritage. Um similarly, the the old maltings that stop us on riverside, there's very little to show for that now, but they were there and they were part of the town for many years. The Fysen legacy, you know, they were big players in the town, the Borough Works, they, you know, right, uh butted the river for many years. The canneries, you know, so that again, they're often part of the heritage. So so there's lots of stories that we need to tell, the tannery right in front there as well, um that we can do. So what I would like to do is to suggest that we continue to work with BFER, working along the lines of this ten thousand will support. What is necessary in terms of these interpretation. I'm sure I'll come up with a list of loads of interpretation panels and the information we want to do, and it's never gonna be funded by that. So we would, I'd like to do then bring that to yourselves, uh and say, what are your priorities, what do you think is the the things that we want to do? That way we can deliver these outputs of the two trails that you see there and the third accessible one. With the view that we then look to deliver the link from Canterbury Way Bridge through Red Castle along the Viking Ditch and Bank through the cemetery. Down to Nuts Bridges, because that whole Viking side of the town is forgotten, we don't really appreciate the the impact that we had from that. And deliver some of the sculpture work um along there that we've identified as part of the Sculpture Working Group. Now, Terry has been able to shoehorn some money out of MTI for the Sculpture Trail. And so some of that money could be utilised to either put sculptures on these trails or to add to the the Viking Trail, which I'm going to call it from now on, but. So that's, that's where we are, I can't take where I'm not. Yeah, I'm disappointed to say where we are, but at least we're gonna have something delivered in terms of trails. And hopefully, we'll we'll be able to to market that and give something back to the effort as part of this BFER project.
Okay, thank you very much, that's a bit meat on the bone, so I'll take Carla first, Dennis, and then you. Oh, Dennis was first, it's a race.
No, no, just, it's not a time frame for these trails to be delivered.
Well, I think as soon as possible, where it is, Stuart, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, the BFER project is is midflow now, so they've got timelines that they need to to deliver, so I think it's gotta be done this year.
Okay, great, thank you. Carla?
Thank you, Stuart. Um I do agree with Stuart, I mean, when it comes to heritage and local knowledge, fully rely on this knowledge, which is quite broad and so it definitely has to us as a committee. To understand, for example, where the Viking trails are and all those things, they need to be enhanced, where to put our, concentrate our efforts to enhance that bit of history and bring it up to. Those stories up to date and making them available for the public and for the town. Uh one thing that sort of bums me a little bit is that, yeah, BFER um is heavily funded. Um and obviously, we strike a partnership with the town council to work lovingly, to work on the river, master the the river, but the, you know, the. In historical part of the heritage part of it. Um but it seems to me that we as a council are still shifting in quite a bit towards those trails and towards those sculptures, it's in the overall grand scheme of things. So when this is, this is a um and a group, is a is a is an organisation that is heavily funded for the purpose of working specifically on the river. Now, we have the conservation groups of volunteers, they have river groups of volunteers, we have a lot of groups that are volunteering their time to the upkeep and the maintenance of the river, the banks, et cetera. All of that is free cost, both as a council and the BFER. So all the heavy funding that they have, I think it's been um sort of gatekeeping. And not used um as, as he, as he has, as useful as it could be. For the for the purpose of of the the projects that actually are done to pay that. So we have the process of the paper, but cash flow is not coming along, we just still yet to ship in ten thousand for sculptures and and give it another ten thousand for. Actually, if you could look at what BFER secured to deal over the course of the project, the total total cost of our project, we're talking about thousands. I'm not around the number, I know it's quite a substantial amount, I'm sure probably someone knows the the round the number. Um and this is something our landlord will know as well, but because he's on the board and participating directly in this project and it's sort of somewhere in the middle of this. Um I find that in order to keep impartiality of of keeping both organisations in check, we ought to have somebody else that could construct. Maybe a little report, and I would propose to council, I would ask the chairman to consider this, to construct a little report about when the project, the general project starts. When does it finish? What was the total amount of funding that came from one agency and what is being asked for as a council? Because then we'll be looking at little parts, a little areas of work, but not but not at the whole screen of things and what's being invested versus what we're benefiting against what could be done. You know, this is the ratio of what has been done against the potential that could be done with the amount of funding that's been available from those agencies. So a full report bringing us down there where we sit exactly in that position would be very beneficial for the council, equally for me, I would say.
Okay, um and and see, I'm just gonna uh comment on that. Um I I think you've made a valid point, I'll come back to that, I think it's separate to our conversation and discussion at the first. So I'd rather deal with the trail aspect first and get a decision on that, but under this item, I am happy to take what you've suggested there. Um so firstly, um on the the trail itself, I mean, I I I'm always arguing for more information and uh clarity. These interpretation boards are expensive, I mean, I purchased, I mean, I've sort of previous life as a community development worker, so. And I'm not sure how many we're gonna be getting, uh and also the design work itself is expensive. So and Stuart, I hear you're sort of offering to uh provide us with more information, which I think is really useful. So if you come back um to a future meeting with a bit more uh detail around how many boards, where they're gonna be. I mean, the the agenda item asks for us to do that as a committee, but it's not only impossible to design a trail at a committee this big. Um and also reach out in advance about any other sort of tidbits of information, I love the story about the sort of barge and the sort of broken marks and that thing. Um and also reach out to other groups in the town, uh some of which might be in the audience, about any, you know, aspects of river heritage that they're aware of. Um and then we can bring it and, you know, actually have something to look at and debate, but we're we're moving in the right direction, I'm very pleased to get this underway. And we just need to be clear on what it is we're agreeing to, I think. Does that sound okay to you? And we just need to be clear on what it is we're agreeing to, I think. Does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, that's fine. I think the decision to agree possible projects, especially if I come up with the list and bring it to the next meeting. And then separately, I think you probably have touched upon that. But if I just make comment in terms of we were partners and we did agree to participate in projects. Now, that happened many years ago because of the ways of lead time. And I think we've all forgotten what we've agreed to do. So it would be useful to have a town council commitment status to say, these are the projects we were currently partners in, this is what we've agreed to. And for your purposes, Alan, as a double check to make sure we have got the funding in there to do those things. For the whole, it's a very big project, hundreds of thousands of pounds. And I don't think that's really from the town council to look at, but you could ask BFER for an update in that respect. But I think from the town council perspective, we do need to know what projects we are committed to.
So just on the trail at this point, are members content that Stuart goes away and produces basically a report outlining content and location of signs? But we're happy with the principle?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I'd be the right person to go with that side of things. Much more knowledge.
And the second point, I mean, essentially what we're asking for is clarity on Fethford Town Council projects with BFER and funding. Is that kind of what your proposal was?
An overall summary. Or a breakdown of what's been achieved and what's the cost going forward? What are we committing to? And how much is this going to cost us? Just for the sake of clarity, because we sort of lost track. Because you say it's a long project and it's a lot of money involved from their side for them to manage. But yeah, where is our contribution along the line? Are we within the timeframes of that expenditure? Or are we falling behind? Or are we ahead of schedule? Are we spending less or more than was intended when the agreement first took place? At the moment, we don't have that information. We're sort of left in limbo.
Yeah. It's not clear to me how Fethford benefits from BFER. And I would like to be able to say it.
Not sure.
Not, you know, obviously we've got our own involvement and costings, but also how Fethford generally, because it's much wider than Fethford. It's a big area. I mean, for example, it says in our notes here today that BFER supported refurbishing street furniture along the river. Well, I've been telling everyone it was us. So, you know, I'm doing them out of some publicity there. And it says they fund our conservation group. Well, I thought we'd pay for that. So some clarity on that, I think would be really useful.
We have to give credit where it's due. So we know exactly who's doing what. And we have a report of it to be easier.
Okay. I see you're busy making some notes there, Alan. Are you sort of content to take that away and to action that?
I'll have a discussion if the committee's okay. I'll have a discussion with the town clerk and see what further engagements we can actually have and what reporting we can put in place. But this committee's very much aware of what's going on.
Brilliant. And I, so I won't take this formal proposal in a second, but there's some work to be done and then we'll review it at a future meeting. So I think we've taken BFER River Trail as far as we can today. Is everybody content with that?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Apologies that it's so warm here. Well, the heating is on. That's slightly worrying, particularly the price of it. Right, nine four eight, to consider an event application on Castle Park. To consider an application to hold an event on Castle Park on a regular basis. Secondly, to also consider whether there needs to be an update of the open space policy to cater for applications. And we've got two points there. So do you want to deal with the specific event application that we've had?
In essence, what members of public has filled in our open space policy application, set out, I've put certain details, what they're requesting. They want to basically run yoga classes one or two times a month. And they set up costs and, you know, they provided risk assessments, they provided insurance, and they're receiving permission. Our open space policy doesn't really cater for such instances because we're actually, they would be treated as a commercial event and they have to pay 300 pounds per time. So, you know, they have to have, you know, hordes of people doing yoga just to recover the open space policy. So that's one of the reasons why I raised that particular point as to should we have a, should we cater for the use of facilities on an ad hoc and small basis where the risk of damage, et cetera, to our property is, I would imagine, relatively low. The second issue that we actually have is, is actually, it's the enforcement side of it and the difficulty of doing that. And when we had our pre-meeting, we just discussed some of the ramifications. You know, for example, if we say anyone can come onto the, onto our facilities and use them and the rest, someone gets injured or hurt, or they don't take necessary risk or have insurance, then we as a council could be liable. And it's hard if we actually regulate that. Do we need to regulate that? Because, you know, just, there are instances, you know, quite recently, we've come across instances on the Facebook pages where people have said, you know, we, you know, we want to join the group that trade on Melford Common, for example. We have no idea that someone is trading on Melford Common. And it's hard if we actually, you know, how do we take that into account? So the challenge really is to look at the application and say, are we happy with it for them to proceed? And do we, is there a nominal fee that they charge or do they charge, you know, do we need to amend the policy? And the second thing is just the principle of this type of activity, do we want people to come and register with the town council and be sure that they are, have the adequate safeguards, such as insurance and risk assessments? The type of thing.
Okay. Dennis, please.
Yeah, in the past on this committee, we have had requests for somebody to do their training on it and running up and down the stairs on Castle Mound and everything like that. And I think at that time, we didn't come to a decision really on it. It kind of faded out before we got a decision made. But yeah, it is an issue we need to look into. And I think any kind of commercial activity on our property, there should be some sort of charge for it. But it's got to be a reasonable charge. It can't be a charge that's prohibited to stopping it. The yoga outside is probably not my thing, but it's probably something that other people enjoy and it's good for your health, I'm sure. I would fall over doing it, but anyway. But again, if it's a commercial thing and people are making money on our property, I think we do need to make a charge in a capitalist style here.
I just have the image of you doing a downward dog in. Anyway, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't noticed it lately, but when the Covid lockdown was, there was a, like a mini gym on Melford Common. And I, you know, I think it should be encouraged, you know, nothing large and keep it, you know. I think, you know, I'd rather, my concern is that they're covered for insurance and on any occasions like that, rather than make money out of it. Because encouraging any use of the outdoors, to me, is great and I'd like to see more of it. I mean, young boys play football and there's, you know, there's always people kicking around things. But anything officially done on a commercial basis, I think they should, you know, be in touch with the town council to give assurances that they are fully covered, what they're doing.
Okay. Carla?
I think that, and I agree with all of them, I think anything that is health-wise, any health activities to be encouraged. And if people or groups are doing health activities in the open space, it can only encourage and show that's why once you're there, people are there doing activities and using the open spaces and one aren't. I think borders are appointed. You know, if it's doing commercially, if they need a charge for the members to do yoga or one of those activities, being commercial, we have to make it very clear that while they're using our grounds, they ought to clearly have their own insurance and make sure that they are fully covered and be responsible for their members. And that means registering their members. If you have 10 people doing yoga and all of a sudden somebody else watches them do a dance, I'm going to join in. It just so helps those two people are not members. And if something happens to them, who's liable for them breaking an ankle or a hand? Then the question is who's responsible for people when they actively? I think for that to work is that the person responsible for the activity has to have full assessment in place, insurance, and a full list of participating members for every session. Because that would allow, would tell us who's part of the group, who's covered by them versus who's just clearly going to park as any other person walks through the park and just goes in the area should something happen. So where the liability falls with. But I don't think charging the 300 pounds because of the open spaces is the best way to encourage an open, uh, open area and healthy activities for the town, to be honest. I think if there were of anyone who saw a burger, if they were providing a product, that would be completely different. We had to open to licensing and all that stuff. If they're a good, you know, thing in a healthy activity, I think let them be. But let's just make sure that the work's correct. Should something happen, we are covered.
Another part of this trouble, how do we govern this? How do we, you know, see who, if they're sticking to the rules, if they've got a list of membership? I mean, do we have an officer has to come along each time they participate and look at all these papers? You know, it makes great difficulty to govern it and it will add a cost to the council.
The, that point about enforcement is very valid and we've discussed it numerous times at amenities. And we haven't got there with an answer. And there's a couple of different issues here. So first of all, the principle of allowing essentially a sessional commercial activity, as in yoga or the like. I would suspect, bear in mind Barbara's comments, that we're relatively content with as a committee. So we are happy with the principle. Then it comes down to a matter of cost. The charge, if you like, at the moment is set at a rate because it's for events like fireworks and large scale events. So what we really need is an affordable session rate. And I think, Alan, in our pre-meeting, you mentioned that we wouldn't want it to be, say, cheaper than hiring the Giltor or the Carnegie. We want a rate sort of equitable to that. Do you have a sort of figure in mind for a sort of sessional rate to?
I think at the moment it's about 20 pounds per session.
Yeah. So I think if we peg it to the same rate as our existing premises, that would give us a benchmark of how much to charge. We don't want to say charge, you know, 10 pound an hour and we're undercutting ourselves somewhere else. So that would be the first suggestion. And there is a procedure for formalised, to formalising your use of the space. You have to apply and you have to do a risk assessment and all the rest of it. We don't promote as a council to anybody, including to councillors, who has authorised permission to be there and who doesn't. You know, when I drive past, I don't know if they've got the right insurance and they've paid their however much per hour. So I do think we need to be clearer from a public point of view on who we've authorised to be there. I could legitimately attend yoga thinking they've got all the permissions. And actually, they shouldn't be there, which would be a bit awkward as the chair of the committee. So we need to be clearer on that. But I do think we need to work out at some point how we deal with the enforcement. Because at the moment, our open spaces policy is largely done on trust. You know, we, you know, we trust that people will apply for permission, have the right permissions and make the payment. We have no procedure internally for dealing with enforcement. And I don't think we're going to crack that today. I think we're going to be able to agree a sessional rate and let whoever is doing yoga crack on with it. But I do think we need some options for future about enforcement. Because otherwise, people might as well just do their own thing. Absolutely. Are you volunteering?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Oh, you're saying again?
So how are we going to distinguish between this group that will pay 20 pounds to be there? You know, with all paperwork and having been fully given step up of people from the council as well and all that to be there. From another group, five or six ladies decided they can't do a class session, charge 5 pounds per lady to do a class session with a teacher. And this is going to show up alongside the yoga class, they're going to be doing this for free. How are we going to distinguish that? Because it is an open space.
Yep. And in the same way, we don't distinguish now between larger events. And I'm quite sure there are groups that use those spaces on a regular basis without permission. But I think we need to be essentially maintaining a list of who's authorised and who's not, you know, from a public, public awareness point of view. Dave and Dennis, please.
Another consideration, well, a couple of considerations. One is, are we going to define the size of group? Because we've got, have we got two rates already, one for a large event, one for a smaller event? Or is it just events?
It's a commercial event and it's a charitable, community based event.
So we need to sort of probably have some idea of that being. I'm giving it a hundred people doing yoga. I know this one is saying it's about 10. But we need to have an idea of the amount of people who can be involved in one of these cheaper rate events.
Do you have a suggestion in mind, Ed?
Maybe about 20, but possibly a pounder, pound each. And the, the other thing is, we're talking about commercial as well, aren't we? So if there are charitable groups that aren't making any money providing facilities for people, how are we going to manage that? Are we going to expect them to register? And is there going to be a difference in price?
My, my whole ethos that I'm getting at is the land is there for the people. It's there for the people to use. And if a few people want to go on there and do halate, I've got that right, halate and all the rest of the exercise thing, that's the people doing it. My only objection is if it's a commercial proposition, that's where I think we need to make the charge and we need to have it all. Because it's organised when it's a commercial one. If a charity comes on and does it, and a group of people get there and have a party, that's great. That's, you know, as long as they clean up after themselves. It's the commercial part of it that I would like to see charged for.
And that's what I'm pointing out, and the cost of maintenance of Castle Park alone in terms of grass cutting is 20,000 pounds a year. That's not included Melford Common or litter picking, even with, well, currently without grazing. But, you know, there is a cost to the council maintaining space, which is for public good, not for commercial. But, yeah. So there's a couple of things. I think I would certainly appreciate, Alan, if you and the guys could look into how other councils manage the enforcement and policing. You know, probably some sort of, you know, security firm or, you know, type of arrangement. But we need to button out the enforcement because, you know, it's all largely irrelevant if we don't have an arrangement in place for enforcement. And then we separately need to agree to this specific request because they're probably waiting for an answer, I should suppose. So Carla?
We have to distinguish what's a charitable group or what's not. As I said, those group of ladies that they have 10 members doing yoga and turns out that they decided the six of them are not going to pay a fee because they are elderly pensioners. And if, if difficult biological, then the usual performance says that if 60% of your activity, 60% of your members are non- paid, then it's a charitable activity. Do we give them the charitable benefit of the doubt or not? I think that's a subliminal mention that is worth to put up in context. If the group's activities are over 60%, or just establish a percentage.
There's a criteria at the moment for the Giltor and Carnegie to determine if something is charitable or commercial. So I suggest we use the same criteria. So essentially, they pay the same for using Melford Common or Castle Park as they would for hiring the Giltor. And that's essentially the principle we're establishing. Okay. Do you need us to vote on that? Are you happy with, we've agreed to?
I, it's right, it's good to be safe.
Okay. So we're essentially setting the price at the same as the other public venues and setting the criteria for commercial stroke charitable. And we are requesting further information on the enforcement side. And once we've got that other information, we can review the open spaces policy in more detail. Because I think it does need threshing out. I've always been slightly uncomfortable with it. But we can't solve everything today. Plus, I'm determined to be under two hours. Well, Alan says we don't need to, everybody. Well, you do, sorry. So that's my summary of the decision we've reached. I'm happy to propose that. Is somebody happy to second that? Susie, thank you very much. All voters in favour? Carried.
My cousin thought I knew a Plato's word.
More than me, okay?
My sister's a Pilates instructor, so I'm not trying to use this. I do get to hear the language quite regularly. Okay, so our second open space event that we need to discuss is an update on Wheels on the Field to update the committee on the status of the application and whether all the information required has been received. So we have previously agreed in principle to this request on Barnham Common. And this is an update on where we're at, because I think it's June, is it Father's Day? Yeah, Father's Day in June. So where are we at with this one?
The answer is there has been no progress from our side. Stephen has been in contact with the organiser. Stephen has, I've heard him because he's in the same office, has messages, phoned, sent emails, have been copied into that. We just out of, just to see if something was happening, we've actually contacted Bexham District Council licensing ourselves. And they are unaware of the event when we did that about two weeks ago. So we are a little bit concerned that the paperwork is not being done. And ramifications, you know, the permissions that this committee made was subject to the paperwork being put in place. And we're just worried that there could be notifications for the committee if, you know, that doesn't happen, if whether there's some encouragement that we could actually provide, because I think that's... Uh, because I think that's, you know, at the end of the day, the event is quite a big event in Bradford. Um, but we also have to follow through.
Okay. So we would have originally had one of these applications for use of open spaces. That's how we got to debate it before. And on the back of that, when they filled it in, uh, all application form completed with questions answered, which we would have had. A copy of the organisation's public liability insurance certificate, so we might have not had that. A completed risk assessment for the activity to be carried out.
Uh, we don't, we we they, we had, it was a risk assessment, but we also needed a safeguarding, uh, policy. There's another policy that's required.
Pummelable adults, yeah.
Yep.
And then details of a Breckham event licence if required. And because it's so big, we think they do need an event licence. So we've not had any of that. Okay. Um, in terms of communication, have we written to the applicant? Because they would have provided us with their address.
We have written and phoned.
Written and phoned, okay.
We were given assurances that the information would be provided to us by the end of April.
Okay. And so this makes our enforcement conversation even more valid. Because what happens if they go ahead and stage this large event on our land, but we haven't granted permission? Because our permission is only subject to.
I would think, well, there's there's the Breckham licensing.
Leave that to it.
We can delegate that to Breckham. Uh, uh, we we'd have to just write to them and say, you haven't met the conditions, which remind you that they have to be in place.
Okay.
We can't have it on the, you know, on Saturday night before Father's Day, Sunday. Um, so it would just be a matter of, uh, write formally writing to them. At the moment, we've done it through emails. We might actually just need to write to them and just mention that it was brought up to this committee. And the committee's views are that the paperwork has to be put in place.
Okay. I can see Dave's, um, that's a lot, don't you, Dennis?
I would say, um, again, they've given us an assurance that we would have information by the end of April and they failed to do that. So I think we should write to them, uh, and with a notice saying that if we don't receive information by a fixed date, uh, then the application has been refused.
Yep.
I think we need to make it clear that we, you know, that give us a decision down the line and give you a little bit more extra time. And then, and hopefully that will get moving and then they can go ahead and do the event. But I think we need to be very clear on our side, why our position is.
Okay. I'll tell Dennis and I'll come back to that proposal, Dave. Dennis?
Just for David too.
Okay, well, say some.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Say some of that talk. Just have a quick look through though. There is no deadline as such for when we can accept all that documentation before the councillors make a decision.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to clean that up on the policy itself.
Yeah.
And then everyone's clear right from the outset, but then.
There's an assumption built in that people will do it in a timely manner, but that's obviously not the case.
Yeah, or depends whose timely manner it is.
When we do our review of our open space policy, we need to make that much. So Dave, so could you just repeat what you was proposing there?
Um, that we write to them, informing them this team, don't receive information by a particular day. Uh, that, uh, we cancel, we will cancel the booking or consider that the booking is not valid.
Yeah. Do I have a second of Dave's proposal? Dennis, thank you very much. All in favour? Thank you. Carried.
I'll abstain, nearly because I was playing one. Whilst I agree with him that we have to give them a certain amount of time to be able to pursue, proceed with the paperwork. If our policy doesn't tell us where the schedule is, you know, we are given to mention someone says twelve months, but we don't have a policy that tells them that we have months. So until we fix that policy, we can't keep people up to meetings. I'm abstaining on this one.
Okay. And I mean, they could, uh, if they fail to meet that ultimate, they could actually put another application in, good name. As long as they've got all the, everything in place, then it doesn't stop them doing it, but I mean, hopefully they will respond.
And I think the application process, um, application process is it will be discussed by the amenities committee. So, um, by default, you'd have to submit it in time to be discussed.
We need to refine our policy.
We do. Seeing as we agree to the principle, let's hope they do what they need to do to make sure it can go ahead. Simple as that. It's not overly onerous for a big event. They're fairly normal criteria that events have to follow. There's nothing, nothing unobtainable there. Moving on to compliments and compliments and complaints. Do you know any complaints or compliments received in terms of the committee? Anything to note? No, thank you very much. And. Kind of relevant page now, I've got this. Is that the last, last agenda item?
Correspondence is next.
Uh, have we got any correspondence to note?
None.
Do we have any committee officers' updates since the agenda was published?
And then also some committee engagement.
Uh, community engagement. Do we have anything under community engagement? The only thing I would mention is the two things we've agreed today under community engagement is one, to promote the application nomination process for front garden competition. If we could get that out there, that would be encouraging. And secondly, the statement that we read out and agreed in relation to the fish bars. If we could get that suitably laminated and stuck up and on social media and the website. Stuart.
I'm sorry, Clayton. Um, I know it's not a gender item, but I did mention the chair on bringing this along just for information purposes. It's just to make people aware that the the cage-laying toilets, the rear entrance to that, the doors are quite rotten. Uh, and when we open the back to bring bins in, it's quite a health and safety issue pulling the bins over a big step, Chris, who's been round there. And then once you get in there, all the curbs are, um, flagstones are all, I mean. So David Brooks has taken it in hand to get some new doors made for that. And I'm looking to create a flat surface there. So, you know, that will come through, you know, there are great channels and that's not. But from a Dad's Army perspective, we've asked if we could have mural on the new doors. Uh, and so I don't know how we need to play this. We need to boot a gender item next time to agree to it. But the the idea is to try and have something along those lines, using, I'll pass around. By the guy who did the pipe mural and also the ones on the hill hall. Um, paying reference to Godfrey always wants to cut the toilet. So the museum would paste the mural itself and attach it to the new doors. Okay.
Is that all nine hundred pounds gone?
Well, I don't, I don't know where the repair to the doors is going from. Alan might be able to. So the doors are in a hell of a state round the back there and that do need to be done.
If we could, um, make sure we pop that down as an agenda item for, uh, our June meeting and then, uh, I'm sure that's something. It's a continuation of, um, sort of similar murals we've done elsewhere in town, isn't it? Thank you. And Dave, please.
I'm one of the community engagement head in. I just wondered, uh, once we do get sheep on the hill, which, um, on the cast pathway, which may happen for our next meeting, it would be great to put something else on the media, wouldn't it?
Yes, I've forgotten about that. So we, those three things.
Or you can have school parties visiting our sheep.
Well, you did do in the past, but I don't think it's a requirement of the contract for graziers now, is it? We, we used to have a requirement for them to host sort of youth groups and school visits and tell them.
We did.
I don't think it's, I mean, they might be prepared to do it anyway, but it used to be part of the contract.
I saw him in the conversation, I hope he's somebody who's on the list.
Yeah. Thank you all very much for your time and your contributions today. Meeting closed.
Thank you very much, Derek. You know, signs go by fish.
Yep.
No one put on a poster?
Why do you need to?
We will need permission for that.
May I on the floor?
Well, I was may I on the floor.
Obviously, Steve wants to be on the open source CCTV, because we're not really, we just want to clear how you're going to make calls there. But this is a tweet there.